Okay, we are going to reconvene our open session. Welcome, everyone. I'm gonna ask our, well, first, yes, I'm gonna ask our clerk, our secretary, to report actions taken in closed session.
There were no actions in closed session.
Thank you for that. Now have the invocation led by trustee Jay and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Dak.
Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you in gratitude for this wonderful season that is upon us, a season of light, a season of giving, of sharing, of love, of family, and joy, a season of sincere gratitude for being able to worship to the dictates of our hearts, and a season to be kind, to be respectful of all people, of all beliefs, and to treat everyone with love and with deep understanding and appreciation. We ask your guidance in the following principles laid down in the classic hymn by songwriter Jill Jackson and Cy Miller, who said, "Let there be peace on earth; let that begin with me. Let there be peace on earth, the peace that was meant to be. With God our Creator, children all are we; let us walk with each other in perfect harmony." Let peace begin with me. Let this be the moment now. With every step I take, let this be my solemn vow, to take each moment and to live each moment in peace eternally. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Amen.
Do I turn to our flag? I will begin the pledge of allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now on to, who put this item on the agenda? All right. 3.5. I can assure you, I did not put this on the agenda.
I think Dr. Barnes put this on the agenda. Just so folks know, Dr. Barnes is sick tonight, so I am sitting in for her. So it's my pleasure, on behalf of the district, to thank Board President Jamal for all of his service in the past year as Board President, and we have a little commemorative gift of our appreciation for his term as Board President.
Thank you very much.[209.01][209.01](APPLAUSE). Very nice. I guess I changed my mind. I'm happy for you.[217.12][217.12](LAUGHTER). Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay. We're now on to our annual organization meeting of the Board of Trustees. Item 3.6. Now, before calling the, calling to order the organizational meeting, oh, that happened. Okay.[248.73][248.73](LAUGHTER) My gift. So I'm gonna adjourn the regular meeting and call to order the organizational meeting in accordance with California Ed Code 35143 and 72,000(c)(2a) and pursuant with Board Policy 2305, the Board of Trustees will take separate actions on items 3.8 through 3.13 in order to comply with the requirements of the annual organization meeting. Now on to 3.7, election of Board Officers. And I believe we have to go in order, and in terms of the order of the officers and then the other positions, and now we'll entertain a motion for the office of Board President.
I make a motion to nominate Tim, Board President Tim Jamal to do another term in Board President. I feel that you did an excellent job this past year, and you should do it one more year. Thank you.
I second it.
Well, thank you for that. Any other nominations from the dais? Comments?
You can't make a nomination when there's been a motion and a second. You have to vote on the motion and second.
Okay. Okay. All right. Hearing none, then let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote, one abstention. So thank you all for that vote. I appreciate it very much. I guess I should've said at the beginning, just for clarification, so the Board of, our Board Policies don't prescribe a specific order of officers. We have discussed that kind of issue in the past, so we don't have a prescribed order. We don't do it based on seniority. There's not specified terms, just so everyone knows, the parameters under which we're doing this election tonight.
So in keeping with our unofficial precedent of a couple of years for the officers, I would nominate trustee Rydel if she will accept the nomination to Vice President.
I second it.
Okay. We have now a motion and a second for trustee Rydel to be Vice President of the Board. Go ahead and vote on the item. Oh, there we go. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote with one abstention. Now on to congratulations.
Thank you.
Should I say that?
You too.
So then I would then like to nominate trustee Inman for Board Clerk for another term.
Okay, I second that.
I think trustee Rydel seconded it first. So nomination from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Rydel.
Great. Good job.
Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, sorry. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Trustee Inman is elected as the clerk of the Board. Congratulations, trustee Inman. All right. Now we're on to item 3.8, appointment of Secretary and Assistant Secretary. And I think we have currently, as our Secretary, our Chancellor who's out tonight, so I will call, ask for a motion and a second for our Secretary.
I make a motion for, to appoint Chancellor Julie Barnes as our Secretary.
I second it.
Okay, we get a motion and a second for our, to be Secretary of the Board. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a seven to zero unanimous trustee yes vote. I know you're watching Chancellor Barnes. Congratulations.
And I nominate Vice Chancellor of Fiscal Services Anne Marie Gable to be appointed to the Office of Assistant Secretary.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Second, motion trustee Milchker, segment trustee Jay, Vice Chancellor Gable as our Assistant Secretary, so let's vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote. Congratulations to you. We're now on to appointment of trustee reps. The first, item 3.9, representative to the nominating committee to the
Committee?
Committee, but
Can we, since we seem to be carrying forward the policy of keeping for one more year the wonderful team we had this last year, can we just appoint the same people as the trustee representatives for 2023 that were this past year? Can we do it in one vote? Is that possible legally?
For each position under 3.9?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I don't, I don't know that we can. Oh, we can. My recollection is we have not done it that way.
Yeah.
Not, well, I guess the question is, you can, I think it's authorized, I think it's permissible that you do that. I don't know how the, if people on the dais here, does anyone want to seek a position?
Does anyone, in a position they're currently in that does not want to be in, or someone who is not in a position want to be?
Yeah, you can treat it like a consent calendar and see if somebody wants to pull a position.
Okay. So take a look at the current positions that you all have. Now would be the time, if you do not want to continue to serve, the only thing, or if you want to be a designate to one of these positions.
Do we, do we have the actual list? It's just list the titles, it doesn't put our names with it.
I have the list and names in front of me. You guys don't
Lucky you.
What's that? You don't have them?
We didn't get it this evening.
Oh.
I couldn't find my paper from
Okay. All right. Well, why don't I read them? So, the nominating committee, the Committee on School Board, School District Organization, the rep is trustee Dak, the alternate is trustee Prendergast. District's political action rep to OCSBA is trustee Prendergast. The representative to the Orange County Legislative Task Force is trustee Milchker, and the alternate is Carolyn Inman. The representative to the IVC Foundation is trustee Jay. The representative to the Saddleback College Foundation is trustee Rydel. The Audit Committee of the District is chaired by trustee Prendergast with trustee Jay and trustee Rydel on the subcommittee. And we are seeking an alternate, so it wouldn't be an exact, if you nominate, you'd have to add an alternate. And then we have representative, the Board Policy Subcommittee, which is chaired by trustee Inman, and includes trustee Dak and trustee Jay. We also want an alternate to that. And then Legislative Advocacy Subcommittee, trustee Milchker is the chair, and it includes trustee Dak and trustee Inman. We also want an alternate for that. And those are the current positions held by the trustees. No.
I'm happy with it.
I would like to ask the Board if anybody would like to serve, we haven't done it before, but for the foundation, because it's a lot of work, and if anybody would like to serve with me, or would like to serve with trustee Jay, would you like?
I would like to serve with trustee Jay.
So, go ahead.
I would like to serve Irvine Valley College with trustee Jay.
Okay, good.
So I don't
Is this an alternate?
I don't think that's permissible. I think that we designate one representative of the Board of Trustees to be the liaison to each respective foundation.
Can there be an alternate? If they aren't there, or something?
I mean, I guess, is Liz here?
I don't think
Okay. Because I think that would be in the bylaws of the foundation, right?
Right. They don't have an alternate.
They don't?
Uh-uh.
Okay. So, can I ask you, trustee Jay, do you want to serve again on the IVC Foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
I love it.
All right.
That's okay.
Okay, let's go back to the Saddleback College Foundation, which is a great spot. I know trustee Rydel, you've done it for a few years.
I'd like to serve again, but I wouldn't mind having somebody with. It's just like when you get a new president, or if you have a new representative on any of our boards here, you have somebody that, you know.
Are you interested in letting someone else to serve, or are you, because we can't have concurrent trustee reps on the, for the foundation?
I don't want, no, I'd like to serve on the foundation board.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, last, last call. Anybody else want to serve on anything, or want to step back from something they're currently doing? No, everyone's happy. All right. So if we're gonna do this en suite
Can I make a motion to, to have the same people that have served so well in the committee this past year?
If you can amend your motion, yes, but can you amend your motion to add the alternates to the Audit Committee, the Board Policy Committee, and the Legislative Advocacy
And we have to pick those people then, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion to, to include the alternates and those various committees that you just mentioned, because we decided it's good to have an alternate to people pick me.
But we have to name the alternates. We have to name who those alternates are in the motion.
Okay.
So trustees Prendergast, Jay, and Rydel are currently on the subcommittee.
For audit.
Audit. So we need an alternate.
And, and just so clarification, why an alternate is needed? You have to have a quorum
Right.
To conduct the meeting.
Right.
And with only three allowed to be there, if two people don't make it, then you can't have the meeting.
Right.
So they would rather have an alternate, so you can at least make sure you have two of the three there.
Good point. Okay, so
Who would like to be alternate?
I think trustee Inman.
No, thank you.[935.72][935.72](LAUGHTER).
Ryan?
Sure, I'll serve as audit.
Done. Trustee Dak?
I would've thought you'd do it for sure. You come to the meetings anyway, trustee Inman.
I know.[948.44][948.44](LAUGHTER).
All right, that's the Audit Subcommittee. Trustee Dak would be the alternate, and then the Board Policy Subcommittee. Trustee Inman is the chair. Trustee Dak and trustee Jay are also on that Subcommittee.
I would be interested in alternate.
Okay. Trustee Prendergast, alternate. This is in the motion. And then the Legislative Advocacy Subcommittee. Has it met this year?
Yes, several times.
Okay. Trustee Milchker is the chair. Trustee Dak and trustee Inman are all on it, and we need an alternate.
Would anybody like to be an alternate?
No? I'll just put myself down as the alternate.
Sounds good, thanks.
All right. All right.
We've all been there for all the meetings already, so you might be okay.
Okay. So now we have that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Prendergast. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote. Okay. Now we're on 3.10, Establishment of Regular Meeting Dates. I will entertain a motion in a second.
So move for the meeting dates for the entire year?
For the 2024 meeting calendar. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second from trustee Jay. Any questions on the calendar? No? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Okay, we're now on to 3.11, Establishment of Agenda, Agenda Planning Calendar.
I move to approve the Agenda Planning Calendar for 2024.
Who seconded it?
Trustee Jay.
Oh, trustee Jay. Trustee Jay seconded. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. 3.12, we need a motion and a second on approving the Agenda format.
So move?
Motion trustee Milchker.
Comment.
I second it.
Comment.
Okay. Second from trustee Jay, and then a comment question from trustee Prendergast.
So, I've been giving this some thought, you know, and I, some consternation bringing this up. We have this thing on there where, and I, and I put it on there, that if we go past the closed session time into the start, meeting start time, and I still think that that's really important, but then I started looking at, we have on here an adjournment time, and I can't think of any other board that does that. That we constantly have to stop the meeting, make a motion to extend it past nine, make a wild hair guess at what time that might be, and are often extremely incorrect. My recommendation would be to take off the adjournment time as a set point. Obviously, we don't like to go long, but there are times when, you know, someone in staff decides to give us two presentations in one night, and they go 45 minutes each. I'm not saying that should be a thing, but I just don't know where that came from, and I, my only guess is that there were past meetings that went till one or two in the morning, and maybe that was a problem at the time. But, I mean, we do try to get that.
Prior boards used to do that. So, and I don't think it's in education code at all. There's no requirement, or
And I, it'd make their job a little easier, not having to deal with that on those, because it is, for all intents and purposes, a rare occasion that we have to do it, but it'd just be one less thing we have to deal with.
So I think, two things, I'm getting word that it might be in our Board Policy that prescribes a specific end date to the meetings, whether it's 9:00 PM or some specific time. And if that is the case, then it would be the Board Policy Subcommittee that would have to take a look at that issue and then come back to the regular Board to change the Agenda format. I mean, we can still change the format into the year whenever we want, right? Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't have to be done in December, I'm open to that being discussed, but if that's something the Board Policy Subcommittee could consider.
No? Chair Inman, is that something the Board Policy Subcommittee can consider?
Yes.
Okay.
It just, yeah, it just struck me as, you know, like I said, I make my students go to board meetings and take notes, and I tell them, go to City of Tustin, because they're always 45 minutes to an hour, instead of going to Irvine, which go till one or two in the morning. And that's not their fault because of what city they live in, that they have a functional or dysfunctional board. I didn't say which one.[1288.48][1288.48](LAUGHTER). Let the public make up their own mind on that one. But, but none of them have an adjournment time.
Yeah.
They don't like going long, but they're not gonna preclude themselves from doing it and shut things down
Yeah.
just because there's a time. And we don't do that, but then we have to take the time to vote on it, and it just seems kind of silly.
Yeah.
So I just, I would just make a recommendation, we consider getting rid of the adjournment time as prescribed time.
Okay.
Question?
All right. Good suggestion.
Mr. Jamal?
Yes.
We'll take it to the policy, if it is a policy. If it isn't, which I have no way right this moment to know that, would we bring it back as like a consent calendar thing or something?
I would, I mean, I think it could be in the consent calendar, or you could just have a
Just a new policy.
It's under, you know, we have a policy, we have items that address Board Policy changes.
Right, okay. So we'll do it one way or another.
You could go directly. I don't think it's, do we mandate it goes to review and study first? I mean, it could go right for adoption, I think.
It can, yes.
Yeah, so you, you could come back with that recommendation instead of review and study for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. We have a motion and a second. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote. Okay, that concludes the organization meeting. We're gonna stay in our spots because we are remaining the same for the next year, and now we will move on to public comments. Do we have any, I don't have any on my desk, but are there any requests for public comments? No? No? Okay. All right. Moving on to Board Reports, let's start with trustee Milchker.
Okay. Which one is a time on? The time is on the voting screen, right? It's on the presentation, okay. Get that right, thank you. This month, I attended, of course, the alleged Subcommittee meeting, the Feast of Lights at Saddleback College, the 12 Angry Jurors. It used to be the 12 Angry Men, but now that women are on the jury, they changed the name to the 12 Angry Jurors, and the nurse pinning ceremony, and they all were just fabulous. I want to congratulate the women's soccer team, who won for the second time, second year in a row, the Orange Empire Conference title. We also had an excellent study session. I thought I'd discuss it a little bit, some of the things we discussed. Some of the people were there and some people were not there. We discussed what, why we needed housing, what kind of housing needed, how to finance it in the timeline. We talked about the monthly cost per student, per room, that it would cost a student, whether there's a single, a double, or a suite, the student survey results, and the funding for, how we would fund these particular housing for students. The state budget act shifted funding from the state general fund grant to the lease revenue bonds, so that means there's no state funding at this time, there's no state funding source at this time. So the most viable source of funding for our district would be local tax funds, and these we utilize to fund most of our capital construction costs. So the other projects would move to a lower, lower on the facilities master plan basic aid option. And the IVC and Saddleback College infrastructure would be pushed further down on the list, which is a decision I think all of us should make, not just the trustees. IVC housing would open if we decide to build it in the year '31, '32, and Saddleback housing would be built, completed in '34, '35. I ask that the participatory consultation with each of our constituent groups be done prior to moving forward, because whether we use GO bonds, COPS, private, public-private partnership, zero interest loans, or our own basic aid funds, it should be a decision of the whole college community, not just one of us. So, so we all need to discuss it. So it's gonna be sent to the participatory consultation groups at this moment. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Trustee Jay?
This holiday season itself, Orange County Community College District got off to a great start with Feast of Lights at Saddleback College. With a total of four outstanding performances, December 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, this was the 41st year of the Feast of Lights, and introduced Saddleback's new choral and vocal music director, Dr. Brandon Elliott. He joined Saddleback Orchestra's director, Dr. Gregorios Karotis, the Greek, I can't say, and the orchestra, the choir, to deliver the beautiful performances we had all grown accustomed to. As accustomed to the program ended with Jill Jackson, Miller, and Cy Miller's inspiration, "Let there be peace on earth; let it begin with me." The total attendance for the Feast of Lights was, of 2023, was 1,466, with two Sunday performances being a sellout. The Orange County Register called this one of the highlights of Orange County's holiday events, which I totally agree. Congratulations to all who participated for making this unusual, unusual and memorial event. It was great. Coincidence with the Feast of Lights was a student holiday sale, featuring arts, crafts, ceramics, and photography created by students and faculty. This was a fun opportunity to support the programs and students, and this is the flyer that they had. The regional labor market was a study commissioned by the Orange County Regional Consortium in collaboration with Lightcast. An updated economic impact study was, been released, featuring the South Orange County Community College District as an economic engine in Orange County with a $7.1 billion impact on the local economy. Great work on the part of the faculty, administration, staff, students, and local businesses. For those interested in innovative ways of helping others during this holiday season, the Giving Machines are available at Dana Harbor for the first time. They're in front of Harpoon Henry's and El Toritos. These are vending machines where you can purchase items for sale in need for world and local charities, starting at just $7. You can purchase items like chickens, pigs, school backpacks, and a million other things for needy children and adults, both local and impoverished parts of the world, for both local and impoverished parts of the world. You can even help support those devastated in the war in Ukraine with a hot meal. Hundred percent of the donations go directly to charitable organizations, with all costs being paid by our church. The Giving Machine will be here for, through December 30th. Help us light the world this holiday season, and visit with your friends and families. A Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and happy holidays to all. I went down to look at it, and the one thing that I want to do, I haven't done it yet, is feed the fish at the, a local aquarium there, and And I thought that would be fun for one day. So I will be doing that this weekend.
Okay, thank you, trustee Jay. Just a reminder, and that was, thank you for all that information, please stay within the confines of our our two minutes. Thank you, so trustee Rydell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to list the things that some has been said already, but I want to tell you something that was very, very special to me. I wasn't here for the last board meeting, but I would have told you about this awesome experience that I had. I went to I V C, well, first of all, I went to Woodbridge High School, and I followed one of our I V C students in their Core America program. And so I spent a couple hours at the high school, I talked to all the freshmen and sophomores, and really saw firsthand what our students are doing to make a difference in the classroom already at high school. Then on Saturday, November fourth, I was invited to campus, I V C's campus, to be part of the Core America and truly be part of it. I interviewed students on the assignment that they were all being interviewed and I had my section. I attended the financial instructions that they received, it was pretty impressive. I mean, I don't know how much they remembered about annuities, but it was, I was very, very excited to see that our community colleges are truly involved with our students. And I understand Core America does offer a salary to them. It's very much like close to my heart with service learning, because I started that back in two thousand when I was faculty, but you didn't get paid. Anyway, the interviewing these students, they really are genuinely, yes, they're going to get some money, but they are genuinely excited to do this. And I wanted to share that with you because it's happening in our communities, just not in the classroom, we're out there. So thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Inman.
Yes, Assemblymember Tree Ta visited Saddleback College, and I was happy to be one of the people to welcome him. Although neither of our colleges are in his district, he serves as vice chair of the Assembly's Higher Education Committee and wants to visit as many colleges as possible. Discussion topics included housing, food insecurity, baccalaureate degrees, and dual enrollment. We toured the campus and it was really fun because every time he saw something impressive, he went, wow. And I remember doing that the first time I toured. I am happy that A C C T has appointed me to the Public Policy and Advocacy Committee. We had our first Zoom meeting a few days ago to get to know each other and to understand what the goal of the committee is. The goal is to accept feedback from community colleges throughout the country and prepare the federal legislative priorities for the opening of Congress in twenty twenty five. Our first in-person meeting will be February at the National Legislative Summit in Washington, D C. Last week was the E O P S Adopt a Family Luncheon. This is the second time I've been there because it's really fun. And it's fun to talk to the students and parents, and the parents are so grateful for the support that their students are getting. And kudos to the staff, not only for the day of the luncheon, but for the program and how much work that they do in caring for our students. Finally, I sent invitations to Irvine friends, asking them to donate clothes for the upcoming Career Corner. I think it's called Corner Closet, something, to make sure we don't miss anybody because they might not want to go on campus. I said, well, you can bring your clothes to my house, oops. I now have a dining room filled with beautiful clothes, many of them new, and I'm not at all sure how I'm going to get them over there, but we'll work that out, thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so I too was able to attend the nurses pinning. And we're starting to grow our cohorts again, we have forty seven, and I understand we're going to try and get it to fifty. It was quite impressive and at the same time, it was run very efficiently, so we weren't there all night, but it was it was really nice to see and the students really do get excited and their family and friends get excited in the audience, and it's always a good show. So thank you for that. I was able to attend I V C's holiday gathering last week, and I plan on attending Saddleback's tomorrow. So it's that time of year where we tell ourselves to stay away from sugar and are tempted everywhere we go. Thank you, Melanie Hiyari and Kristin and the staff, anyway. But yes, so for everyone, since we won't see you until our next meeting, happy holidays, happy new year, and good tidings, thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Deck.
So I was also fortunate enough to attend the Saddleback Nurses Pinning Ceremony, my second time seeing that. It's great every time, so I'm glad to be there and supporting our nursing program at Saddleback College. Additionally, I was able to attend the Legislative Subcommittee. We got an update on how the state's finances are doing. In case you don't know, it's we're kind of in the hole, so that that puts a little bit of, you know, some stress on figuring out how we do specific things. And one of the things that has been affected by that was our housing situation, which I also was proud to be here for our study session just a few weeks ago. And I want to just say once again, I'm I'm fully committed to getting something for our homeless or housing challenged students, because just from what I've seen in the classroom, having a stable home environment is crucial to learning and success. So I do want to again share with those students watching that right now, very supportive of housing and hope we can get something done soon, thank you.
Thank you for that. I want to congratulate the Mission Viejo Diablos for winning their second state football championship on Friday night at Saddleback College Stadium. And it's so awesome that our hometown high school got to play and win state championship in our wonderful new stadium. It was meaningful to me as well, it's the second title the Mission Viejo High School has won. The first one in two thousand fifteen, my son played on that team, so. And so it was really awesome to see the the Diablos bring home the title again. And I I've already gotten feedback from a lot of people at the game complimenting the stadium. So I hope it continues to come here year in and year out. That's a big, big win. And then, secondly, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. We appreciate everything that you all do in the district, from the staff to the faculty, to district services. And so I I hope you enjoy the the time off and come back with vigor because we've got a lot going on in twenty twenty four, so thank you for that. So I'm going to take a deviation from, oh, student trustee Hitya is not here. She's she's absent for good reason, I believe she's studying for finals, so she is excused. We do have one request for public comment, so I'm going to ask Carmen Mara Hernandez to come to the podium to make her comments. And just a reminder that comments are to be made up to two minutes, thank you.
Peace to all of you and to the whole world today, for all the one who are suffering, especially children. I would like to thank you today and honor the Equity and Diversity Former Committee and the committee today, it is F O C U S, for the amazing work they have done through the year. Thank you to the co-chair, amazing Mr. Zimmerman, and to everyone, every member of this amazing committee. August two thousand and twenty, we brought to the Equity and Inclusion Committee three very urgent matters. Number one, Wi-Fi to the student who couldn't during COVID. It took three months, but suddenly it was approved for them to come to school to use Wi-Fi in the parking lot. Second, multicultural center, good news, now we are going to have a multicultural center. Took four years, but we are very happy with this. Number three, and the most critical situation, we brought the unhoused students. I know you are getting together, the college is getting together, but we need action now. Please stop building classrooms, we need houses for students. You cannot imagine how many unhoused students we have, so please take action now. Then I would really like to tell you good news. After two and a half weeks, the L R C elevator was not working. I am so happy to tell you that today the student with disabilities can go to the library in the third floor. It took an accident from one faculty member on a Tuesday to have the elevator working on Wednesday. I would like to tell you what we do in our committees. Thank you to Professor Thomas.
Can I ask you to wrap up in about ten seconds? You're over your two minutes. You want ten seconds to wrap up, I'm willing to do that.
Oh, ten seconds?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you to Thomas for the lunch acknowledgement. Thank you to Barbara for the murals. Thank you, I know I don't have a time, but thank you to each one of you in Equity and Diversity Former Committee and the Focus Committee now for equity, inclusion, and for unhoused students. We can we will continue fighting for this, we need action today, we cannot wait anymore, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on, any any other requests for public comments? No, okay, let's move on to four point two, A S G reports. I'm not seeing the, I I assume the maybe the students are studying. Who is here with us today? You have someone behind you can help you.
Okay, okay, hello, everyone, so my name is Chloe Han, and I'm serving as the A S I V C Executive Vice President this year. Our A S I V C president, Diego Victoria, cannot be here, so I'm going to be delivering the student government report on his behalf, so thank you all for having me. So I'm going to start by talking about our recent student de-stress event. So last week, Student Life in A S I V C, we hosted a variety of activities to help students de-stress ahead of finals week. So our pet therapy event with O C Animal Allies was a huge success. We also had a variety of other activities like a study break, social, and D I Y crafts to help support our fellow lasers. Additionally, last week, our A S I V C Executive Board attended the president's holiday mingle, which was a great opportunity to share space with I V C faculty, staff, and administrators. So thank you to Dr. Hernandez for inviting us. And moving on to our A S I V C committees, all of our A S I V C committees, for example, Student Events, Sustainability, Civic Engagement, and our Judicial Court have been working really hard this semester to bring forth meaningful advocacy and efforts to support student success at I V C. So to highlight some of our big accomplishments, we held an unprecedented referendum election to update our bylaws and policy manual to reflect the exponential increase in student engagement and involvement in I V C. We conceptualized and drafted an anti-discrimination pledge for A S I V C to focus and operationalize our efforts around diversity, inclusion, and accessibility. And we're currently drafting potential resolutions to present to the Student Senate for California Community Cultures General Assembly this spring. And additionally, we are continuing to discuss transportation equity and engaging in dialogue with O C T A to ensure that getting to I V C physically is not a barrier for students. And finally, to round out our fall semester, we're excited for the upcoming I V C CARES food giving event this Thursday, and this is honestly a highlight of our semester because it allows us to provide hundreds of students with a hot meal, groceries, and resources ahead of the holidays. Thank you all again for having me.
Thank you for that, it was a great report. Now move on to the I V C Academic Summit, some, sorry, Academic Senate. I think Rebecca's not here today, but we have Summer Surplus here in her behalf, or on her own instead.
Yes, I am Summer Surplus, I'm Academic Affairs Chair at I V C here for Rebecca. She asked me to update you on the Center for Professional Development at I V C. We're continuing to work on developing our unified vision of professional development at I V C through our grant from the Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Initiative. This grant includes visits from a peer resource team who came to I V C twice this fall. The first session focused on listening to representatives of all constituent groups at I V C and sharing suggestions for how to best achieve our goal. The biggest takeaway was that the campus community was looking for a center to provide professional development for a broader group, not for just faculty. So they wanted to include classified professionals, administrators, and even students. The peer resource team came back in late November and helped us draft a plan to move forward with this project. And we're in the process of finalizing that plan now, in fact, we submitted the plan for feedback today. And we, the Academic Senate, are grateful for the work of our faculty, staff, and students who were involved in sharing feedback and drafting the plan. And a big thanks to Vice President Rick Miranda and the Office of Instruction for their support in this project. I also wanted to share about a workshop series we're working on on supporting neurodiverse students in the classroom. We've been working to develop a three-part workshop series focused on supporting neurodiverse students in the classroom after hearing this request from faculty via our Academic Affairs Committee. Workshop one will take place during Spring Flex Week and will be facilitated by our Disabled Support Programs for Students, our D S P S counselors, who will share the services they provide, as well as various case studies to help faculty think about how they can better support neurodiverse students. For workshop two in February, we're working to bring an outside speaker, Jonathan Mooney, who shares his personal story as someone who learns differently and discusses approaches to adapt the learning environment for students and focus on the strengths students bring to the classroom. Mr. Mooney will deliver a keynote address in person and on Zoom, and then a smaller hands-on workshop. And for our third workshop, the D S P S counselors will host a Q and A session.
Thank you for that, welcome to the meeting tonight. Now we have Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett.
Good evening, everybody. So I decided that I would like to take this final meeting of the year to just update you on some of the achievements that Saddleback's Academic Senate has made this semester. So they fall into three categories. One is work that we have done in collaboration with I V C's Academic Senate, with the two college presidents and with our Vice Chancellor for Human Resources and our Director of Recruitment and Employment Services, yes, Danielle Heinbuch. We have a faculty hiring work group that is now in its third year, the people that I mentioned sit on it. And one of the things that our focus has really been on developing more equitable hiring practices and policies. We want to diversify our faculty pool and our our faculty as a whole. So this is really exciting, we made really good work in terms of where we advertise. We are working on changing our interview process. And out of this came a new work group that we have formed, it's on equivalency. So when someone applies for a teaching position, if they don't meet the minimum qualifications as established by the state, they can apply under equivalency, which is to show that their experience is at least equal to those minimum qualifications. And so this work is, this task force is in the process of drafting what we hope will be an addition or an addendum to the B P, the A R on full-time and part-time faculty hiring. So we had that, wow, and look at this, I have twenty seconds left. We also have, what else I want to talk to you about? I'm going to actually talk about what we did with Vice Chancellor Chris McDonald. Both colleges, we established a, we investigated the possibility of moving to a sixteen-week compressed calendar. Ultimately, there was no consensus among the faculty on this. So we have decided that the current calendar will remain as is, and maybe in another two to three years, we'll bring this back for for investigation. And I'm going to stop there because I'm cognizant of time, thank you all.
Thank you for that report, now on to the Faculty Association, Melanie Hiyari.
Hi, everybody. I first want to, at this time of year, thank all the faculty for all the work they're doing. It's finals, the students are taking the finals, the faculty are doing the grading and the work of all that they've been doing all semester, but this is a very busy time. They are also probably preparing for next semester already. So I just want to, on behalf of the Faculty Association, thank all the faculty for everything they do every single day. They are the reason we are all here, and so thank you for that. I also want to honor another amazing faculty member that we have lost at I V C and that the district has lost, and that is Marjorie Lucibrink. Marjorie was one of the founding faculty members, one of the thirteen founding faculty members at I V C in nineteen seventy nine. She taught English, and personally, I had the honor to know her as a part-time faculty and for a short time as a full-time faculty. I I remember sitting in a meeting as she presented her sabbatical project, and it was earth-shattering. She did a whole project on how to teach English online. So she was a pioneer for online teaching, for publishing. She was a prolific writer and production of literary materials, and she was a great colleague. And so in honor of her tonight, I just want. And so in honor of her tonight, I just want to say that my condolences to all those that have known her for all those years and to her family. It's a great loss for all of us. And then I want to end by just saying it is the end of 2023, and there's lots of holidays and there's lots of things coming up. So I just want to wish everyone a safe holiday and a healthy holiday. And maybe 2024 will be that year we've been waiting for, for a really long time. Maybe I shouldn't even say that. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you for that report. Now moving on to the, excuse me, Saddleback, sorry, IVC Classified Senate.
Good evening, everyone. So quick updates from Classified Senate at Irvine Valley College. So last Thanksgiving, we had our Thanksgiving food drive that was headed by Angela Mahaney, Robert Flannoy, and Beverly Hill. Many classified professionals at IVC contributed, as well as administrators and some faculty, and were actually able to raise enough funds to feed 52 students in need, particularly from our EOPS and Food Resource Center programs. We were actually able to give like full food basket that actually also included a full turkey. So we were very happy to be able to do that for our students. We also had our first Lunch and Learn around two weeks ago, where we had close to 50 classified professionals attend. We had Tim Van Norman and Amanda Turner from our IT Department lead a workshop, particularly on how to leverage AI in the workspace. We are planning to have more Lunch and Learns in the upcoming spring semester, where we're looking at topics such as best practices on how to plan events and some other topics that are classified professionals are also looking for. As a quick update to our Care and Campus Committee at IVC, as you remember, we are trying to transform our work group into an actual committee. So we're now actually set in having that hopefully established by spring 2024. And we will be following a tri-terre model where a classified faculty and an administrator would be leading the charge for Care and Campus at IPC. And I still have 30 seconds, and I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you on behalf of IVC Classified Senate for all your support throughout this entire year, for everything that we were doing at Classified Senate. And I wish you all happy holidays and a warm and relaxing season.
Thank you for that update. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening, trustees. I want to announce that we are continuing to make waves at our Saddleback College Care and Campus commitments. This week, the first batch of new name tags have been printed, which we are really excited about. They are larger, more visible for students, have a beautiful new design that includes an outline of the Saddleback Mountains, have additional languages that we speak to be visible to support students, and have preferred pronouns listed, as you can see here. So we are excited to be continuing to roll that out to all employees campus-wide. We are also currently planning our Joint Classified PD Day with IVC, which we, which will be held in March, in order to provide meaningful professional development to classified professionals. All in all, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a restful winter break. Thank you all for the great work in 2023, and we look forward to more to come in 2024.
Thank you for that report. Now on to CSEA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board of Trustees. First of all, I want to wish Dr. Juliana Barnes a speedy recovery and hope she gets well, and wanted to wish her happy holidays. I also want to, as we come to the end of this year, really give thanks and really express my gratitude for working with some of the administrators on the district level. Dr. Cindy Viscachill, Executive Director Kim Wittes, Dr. Chris McDonald, Danielle Heinbuch, who I speak to often just to conduct union business and business of the district, and Connie Kavanaugh, who has really helped us a lot over the past year. And I want to thank them all for helping me as chapter president to really be able to get the operation of the district and the colleges done. I want to wish you all a happy winter holidays. I would like to recommend a movie, a holiday movie for you to see. It's called Joey Noel, which is Merry Christmas. I actually met the director, Kristin Carrion. He told me that he made the movie because while he was trying to plant crops on his family farm, he found World War I shells, which were still live. That movie tells the futility of war and why, when people have common denominators, they can actually celebrate the holidays, find common ground, and be, and have peace. And as trustee Jay's message was, is part of it was peace on earth, that is this holiday season. And what I would like to do is extend an invitation to the leaders of all the warring countries of this world, have high tea, and the best chefs, just have a lot of food, and let's discuss common denominators so that we can finally have what this holiday season is all about: peace on earth.
Thank you for that. Okay. We're now going to move forward. I don't believe the POA is here. I don't think we have any requests for board reports. No public hearings, no resolutions. We're on to then 7 point, item seven, 7.1, Authorization of Payment to a Trustee Who is Absent from a Board Meeting. I think we need a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Milchker. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee, oh, yes, vote with one abstention. That's right, I got it. Okay. Speaking of board policy, 7.2, Board Policy Revision, this is for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Jay. Any questions on this?
Just wanted to say thank you for revisiting some of the language and making it more clear. It makes more sense now, thank you.
Very good. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Now we're on to Presentations and Discussion Items, 8.0. 8.1, we're going to have a presentation on accepting the audits for the District's Foundation, IVC Foundation, and Saddleback College Foundation. And who is coming forward to do that? Oh, I should, hold on, sorry.
Brandon Harrison with I. Bailey. He is our audit firm. He's a partner with the firm.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, trustees. My name is Brandon Harrison. I am the audit partner that oversees the District Foundation, the two foundations, actually the three foundations, I'm sorry. I'm going to go over all the reports, and I promise I won't take up your time and take you into 1 a.m. I promise I'll get through them pretty quickly. So the first one I'm going to go through is going to be the District Financial Statements. What I always want to convey to board members is these financial statements are management's financial statements. We as independent auditors come in and independently test reconciliations, test balances, and verify that that information is free of material misstatement, free of material noncompliance. I do want to point out that we have met with the Audit Committee and went over the, these are the results of each, each report that we have here as well. We did issue an unmodified opinion over the District's financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion that you can receive. That means we believe that the financial statements are what we call free of material misstatement and free of material noncompliance. We did not have any audit adjustments in the current fiscal year, which means that the information that management brings to you on a consistent basis, we did not have to adjust those financials to ensure that these financials were fiscally and financially free of material misstatement. Sorry about that. So to really summarize everything, I really say that if you don't want to read a 106-page audit report, you'd want to look at, the first you want to look at is the management discussion and analysis. What that does is that provides a summary level of information over the financial statements. It provides comparative information from prior year to current year. It gives you budgetary highlights as well, and it's also in a nice narrative form instead of reading 106 pages. So if you ever just want to read a summary of it, that is on page five. Management prepares this report, but what we do as independent auditors is we compare that information to ensure that it's accurate to the financial statements as presented. But I am going to skip a lot of pages. If you're following, I'm going to go to page 102. Page 102 is what we kind of have a summary of a report card of over the district. We actually issued three opinions over the financial statements. One is over the financial statements itself, the numbers. The second opinion that we do is we provide an opinion over your federal compliance. And the third, we provide an opinion over your state compliance. We did, as I mentioned before, we issued an unmodified opinion. No material misstatements, no material noncompliance, no significant deficiencies. Over the federal awards, which is kind of a higher risk for us auditors when we come into any higher education, we audited 96% of your federal dollars. We audited the student financial assistance cluster, your HERF dollars, your Career and Technical Education Act, your state and local fiscal recovery, and your research and development. So we audited a lot of your federal programs, and we're pleased to note that we had no federal findings in the current fiscal year. And we also issued one opinion over the state compliance. That's when we look at your DSPS, we look at your SCFF reporting, we look at residency testing. And we're pleased to announce that we had no findings in the state compliance as well. And one of the things that we always have to do is we have to follow up if we had any comments in the prior year, because it's always important. Whenever we have a finding, we always say that it's to improve the district. But it's always important to ensure that the finding is not repeated finding. So the finding that we had in the prior year was implemented in the current fiscal year, so therefore you had no findings to report at all for the district. Before I move on to the next one, there's a lot of information in there, but I would love to answer any questions.
Any questions on this item?
No, I just wanted to highlight that, thank you for all the work. But, and you mentioned it, the fact that we did have a finding in the previous year and think management was able to clean that up and get that off the charts. So that's very helpful for anyone who pays attention to that.
Thank you for that.
All right. The next report that I'll go over is the Saddleback College Foundation Audit Report. Again, management's financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion again over these financial statements. We had no audit adjustments and no findings to report for the Saddleback Foundation. The foundation has approximately about $12.7 million in total assets. The majority of those assets are going to be about $9 million in your investments. In the current fiscal year, you had approximately $2.5 million in revenues in the foundation, which is up from 2.3 from prior year. Your expenses stayed consistent. So we saw an increase of $1 million in your total net assets that brought it up to 12.7. And the majority of that is a big swing in the investment market from prior year. You had approximately $1.1 million loss, and you had a $700,000 gain this year. So that's going to show you the increase in your total net assets. So again, another clean audit for the Saddleback Foundation, and we really appreciate the work of the foundations as well.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions on the Saddleback College Foundation Audit? Oh, all right. You're on to, I think, IVC, right?
Yes, two more to go. IVC is next. So again, please announce, we had an unmodified opinion. No findings again, or no audit adjustments. Approximately about $4.8 million is in that foundation, which is up from about $4.2 million in the prior year. And the majority, again, is going to be your investment assets. For revenue, was approximately $2.2 million, again, up from prior year of $1.7 million. Expenses slightly went up a little bit, and again, you had a large sway in your investments. So again, you had a positive $600,000 increase in your net assets. And the foundations have a really good blend of net assets because we have restricted net assets and we have unrestricted net assets. Both of the foundations here have a really good blend because you always want to have some leftover for unrestricted. So you have for operations. So I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Any questions about the IVC Foundation Audit? Okay, now you're on, one more to go.
One more. And this one's going to go really fast. This is the Foundations for South Orange County Community College. This is the smaller foundation. You have approximately about $18,000 in the foundation there. We issued an unmodified opinion, no findings, no audit adjustments, and very little revenues come in. It's about $6.3 million. But with all the foundations, we ensure that donors restrictions, when they come into any of the foundations, we verify that those donors restrictions are met. And whenever the expenses go out, we make sure that they're for the right time and purpose as well.
I think you were being facetious, right, on 6.3 million?
I said 6.3 million.
You did.
Sixty, sixty-three hundred.
I was being very facetious. I'm sorry. I'm so used to the bigger numbers. No, it was.
I was going to say.
All right, I'm going lobster with the chancellor when she's got that expense account going.
$6,300. I am very sorry, yes.
You were this close to getting through unscathed.
That was my fault, I'm sorry. You all did look a little puzzled when I said that. I said, okay.
I was excited.
So that, again, another clean audit. We do really appreciate management. We appreciate management, the foundations as well. Very forthcoming with all the information that we request. We never have any issues with any of the management, always forthcoming with the information. So we really do appreciate it. And I always say that, especially with the district audit, it's not just the fiscal audit. There's so many different elements that come into our audits, whether you're dealing with administrative services, whether you're dealing with so many different areas. We really appreciate all the individuals throughout your campuses.
Well, we appreciate the work you do, and we appreciate the work of especially Business Services under Anne Marie's Department. Internal controls are extremely important to any organization, but especially so when you have taxpayer dollars. So thank you for that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Your excuse. Okay.
Move to approve the.
Oh, you're on it.
Yep.
Motion from trustee Prendergast to approve 8.1. Second from trustee Rydel. Let's go ahead and vote. 8.1 is approved on a seven to zero trustee unanimous yes vote. Now on to our Consent Calendar Items. Are there any pulls from the items?
I have one. 9.3, please.
Okay, 9.3. Any others? All right. Does someone want to move the balance of the items?
Yeah. I'll move the balance of the items.
Motion from trustee Milchker.
Second.
Second.
Second trustee Dack to move the balance of the items except for 9.3. Motion carries on unanimous trustee yes vote. And the consent calendar items are approved except for 9.3 and trustee Inman.
Yes, 9.3 is for this Irvine Valley College speech team to go to Fireopine National Championship. And I want to wish them luck. It's a couple of months away. And I know, having done this job, how, what an incredible amount of work they will have to do. They have already done, but will have to do before March 30th. So I want to wish them luck. It's an excellent opportunity for people and a wonderful tournament. So thank you.
Do you want to move the item?
I'm so moved.
Motion from trustee Inman.
Second.
Second from trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The 9.3 carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. All right. We're now on to Business Services, 10.1. IVC Charge Ready Project. Adopt the Resolution of Attention Intern agreements with SCE, Southern California Edison, for Grants Have Easements at IVC Parking Lots 5 and 8, and to conduct a public hearing. Do we have a motion on this item? Motion trustee Rydel.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchker. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, so I'm able to capture the vote. The motion does carry on 10.1 by unanimous trustee yes vote.
Okay, moving on to 10.2, the Contract for the Co-Generation in Central Plant at Saddleback College, contract with Veolia Energy Solutions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion trustee Jay.
I have a question.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchker and a question from trustee Prendergast.
So I see that the contract's ending soon, into this month, I believe. But then we're only renewing it for four. Is that common? Is it, we only do four-month renewals?
It's not common, but it allows us enough time to go out for a whole new RFP, for competitive bidding with other potential vendors at the end of this interim contract.
Is that just, it was like an oversight that we didn't realize it was coming up to do RFP sooner, or?
That is absolutely the case.
Okay. Answers my question. And then I assume the cost is because most of what they're doing is heating, and during those colder months, it costs us more?
It's that, but also they're doing prep in the colder months for the rebuilds that happen in spring and summer. What we should understand about this is there's personnel costs in this to run the plant, but it's also. but it's also the equivalent of a maintenance contract and a service contract. So there's lots of things built in. But yes, the winter months have greater costs, particularly for prepping for this rebuild period.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, the motion carries on a seven to zero unanimous trustee vote. We're now on to 10.3, Adopting Resolution Change Order with GCI Construction for the Emergency Gas Line Repairs at the ATAS Building at Saddleback College. Is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Motion, Trustee Milchekr, second from Trustee Jay. Any questions? No, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote. Okay, now we're on to 10.4, Campus-Wide Fire Alarm Upgrade Project at Saddleback College, The Awarding of a Contract, excuse me, Contract to Golden Phoenix Construction.
Okay, I move approval of that.
Motion, Trustee Milchekr, second from Trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. 10.4 is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote. Now on to 10.5, Award of Independent Contractor Agreement for Security Services at ATAP to Absolute International Security.
Okay, I approve, I move approval of that.
Motion, Trustee Milchekr.
Second.
Second from Trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote. Now on to 10.6, ERP System Work Day. Is there a motion?
I move approval on this item.
Motion, Trustee Milchekr.
It's through, thank you.
I second.
Second from Trustee Jay. Any questions? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. We're now on to 11.0, Human Resources, 11.1, Academic Employees and Economic Classified Administrators, Managers, Personnel Actions, Ratifications, any changes?
No changes, but one readout, so just indulge me for one moment. We've hired a new Director of Learning Assistance. Her name is Jennifer McConkey. Contract dates December 4th, 2023 through June 30, 2025. Range 17, Step 2, Annual Sari 154716. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
So I move approval of the academic voice.
Motion from Trustee Milchekr. Second from Trustee Prendergast. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. All right, 11.2, Classified Personal Actions and Ratifications.
No changes.
No changes to the item. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the classified personnel.
Motion, Trustee Milchekr. Second from Trustee Prendergast. Any questions?
There's just one name. I like to name people that have worked at our district for more than 10 years, and one is Michael McCormick, Technical Arts Director, a media performances designer. He's worked for over 14 years for Saddleback College, so thank you.
Thank you for that recognition. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. We're now on to item 12, Educational and Technology Services, 12.1, Public Safety Compact.
So moved.
Motion, Trustee Prendergast. Second from Trustee Dak. Questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote. Okay, we're now on to our Information Items, 13.1, Staff Response to Public Comments from Previous Board Meeting. 13.2, Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College Speakers. List of 13.3, List of Board Requested Reports. 13.4, Monthly Financial Status Report. 13.5, Facilities Plan Status Report. We now are on to our Reports from our Administration and Governance Groups. And I'd like to start off, well, I guess we're going to go, do you have a report? Okay. On behalf of Chancellor Barnes, Vice Chancellor Gable.
Yes, and on behalf of Chancellor Barnes, I just want to wish everyone in the district a very happy holidays and hope you have a safe and wonderful time off, and good luck to our students and faculty for finishing out the semester.
Thank you for that. IVC President John Hernandez.
Thank you. I also would like to extend best wishes to our students as they approach the finish line. I know sometimes it seems like it's not in sight. They're in the home stretched, and definitely want to wish them a well-deserved winter break. I don't know about you all, but it feels like this time of year, it's my annual tradition to say, I can't believe the holidays are here, what happened to this year? And perhaps it's just the fast-paced life and personal and work environments that we all are accustomed to, but I do hope that this time of year that we all have an opportunity to unplug, to step back, to reflect on our impact, to process all the things that we have achieved, and more importantly, to refocus on our energy on the new year. So I also want to extend happy holidays and a happy new year to everyone.
Thank you for that. Saddleback College President Elliot Stern.
I was fortunate enough to be able to spare the time to attend Friday night's performance of Feast of Lights. Four additional performances followed Friday, I'm sorry, three additional performances followed Friday, Saturday, and two on Sunday. Friday, I noticed quite a few staff members from our Ampton Division helping out and doing their jobs well into the evening. And then when we came back Monday for pinning, I noticed many of the same people working for pinning, and suddenly had the epiphany that those are the same people that worked the Saturday show and two Sunday shows in addition to the Friday show, and then got ready for us on Monday. As I sat here tonight, in between comments, I peeked over my shoulder and saw Dr. Lovett trying to correct papers in between important statements from the board. Incidents like this remind us that this time of year, people are especially busy. They're not chilling and celebrating the holidays. We're busier than ever. But December happens 12 months a year, and there are hundreds of Dr. Lovets and dozens, if not hundreds, of classified professionals like the one who supported our programs for Feast of Lights and for our nursing pinning on Monday. So to them, the faculty, the professional classified staff, and our managers, I say thank you for everything you do all year. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you for that. Well, you're going to be two people tonight, Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
No report.
All right. Thank you for that. Vice Chancellor of Education and Technology.
I have no report tonight.
No report, thank you for that. And to wrap things up, Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
I'll break the tradition of my colleagues here. I just want to comment, Margot Lovett, Dr. Lovett stated that HR has been working with the college presidents and the senate presidents on hiring practices. It is such a unique circumstance that the senates, one, really cared about doing meaningful work on the hiring practices, but also working with us to create a district-wide equivalency process. So I want to commend the senates for their commitment to equity, and also in particular, Rebecca Beck and Margot Lovett for working directly with us on making some very meaningful change. So I've never had the chance to work with senates in my career at a number of districts, and I just appreciate the opportunity. So thank you to the senates.
Okay, thank you for that. We're now nearing the end of the meeting, and tonight we are going to adjourn the last meeting of the year in honor of Irvine Valley College is retired Professor Marjorie Coverley-Lisabrink, who passed away on October 4th. Marjorie was a founding faculty member in IVC's Department of English and an accomplished writer, scholar, and teacher, and we did hear about that earlier in the board meeting. Active in shaping the early years of the college, she is fondly remembered as a trailblazer in electronic literature. Her pioneering contributions led the Electronic Literature Organization to name one of its awards in her honor. She further served as the organization's second precedent, solidifying her impact on the international stage. Joining IVC in 1979, as one of the original 13 faculty members, Marjorie explored the intersection of computers and writing. Her endeavors included experimenting with computer-generated poetry and established IVC's Compute English Program. Later, she created the development of the college's first online courses in literature and writing, which were broadcasted on both television and online platforms. On behalf of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees, I'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of Marjorie. So thank you, everyone. Good night, have a peaceful holiday.